Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Here.
May please have Pastor Brian Robinson come to the podium for invocation. We please stand for invocation, followed by the slido flag.
Lord, as we come to this meeting tonight, we thank you for this city of Millville that you've blessed us all to be part of. Lord, as we are just finished with an election season, we thank you that we live in a country where everybody can voice their vote. Tonight, we especially ask for your wisdom, for your guidance, for your justice, for your mercy, and in all that is said and done, that most of all, your will for your people in this great city would be done. In the name of your love, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public and required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. We did remove the ordinance for first reading, item number one, which was the bond ordinance for water utility improvements, as well as resolution, item number three, which was a resolution approving the adoption of the revised employee manual for the city of Millville. And we also need to add resolution, item number nine, a resolution accepting code blue program grant funding from the Cumberland Empowerment Zone Corporation.
Thank you. Public comment on agenda items only. If anybody from the public would like to comment on agenda items, please go to the podium, state your name, and concerns for which agenda item. Seeing no one, I will close public comment on agenda items only. Presentation?
Yes, we have the 2025 best practices inventory as a discussion item. And you were sent everything, so I didn't know if you had any questions or topics, but it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it was received?
Yeah.
Anything?
No.
Okay. Bills, please.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Second motion.
Motion second on bill payment. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes. Minutes.
We need a motion to approve the minutes for the following dates, work session and regular meeting minutes dated October 7th, 2025, and work session and regular meeting minutes dated October 21st, 2025.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have motion and second and approval and dispens of the following minutes. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes. Petitions and letters.
We need a motion to receive and file mayor's letters of appointment to the planning board.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion and second for petition letter, item number one. Any comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes. Reports of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I want to congratulate all of the winners of the commission election yesterday. You're going to be taking these seats. Want to wish you luck and looking to the future. I hope this is the last time I have to give these thank yous for the time I'm left here. As most people know, we had another fire in town the other night, and once again, we had mutual aid from Vineland Bridgestone, and I believe downtown shit was here. People, you got to remember, your public safety team is working for you. They may be shorthanded. Sometimes they may be run down, but they're out there, they're doing their job. Fire, police, rescue. Ambulance 30 is now in service and on the road working. And with that, progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Sui.
Sure. First, let's get the Santa's mailboxes returning on Monday, November 12th until Sunday, December 14th. So you can write your letter to Santa, drop it into his special mailbox in the vestibule at the police station, and that leads directly to the North Pole, and you don't need any postage. Just make sure that you make the return address legible so that Santa can write back, and you will get a personal letter from Santa. I had the distinct pleasure of delivering the code blue check to the Hope Center, I guess it was last week. So I, when I, upon my initial visit there, I found out that the Hope Center hadn't yet received their code blue funding, and I was told that the city was holding on to it, which I didn't think was right. So I checked with our CFO, and I was able to determine that the funds hadn't been sent from the county to the city. And even though I wasn't in charge of revenue and finance, I began working to rectify that problem. I even talked about it at meetings here. After about three weeks, we finally got the money from the county, and I was able to hand deliver the check over to the Hope Center. And I also delivered to the Hope Center the emails that proved that the city had not yet received the money from the county until we delivered the check. So I was ecstatic that I could fix that problem, because that affects a lot of, a lot of people. Unfortunately, by the time I accomplished the delivery, rumors had started and spread through the city that I was intentionally, the city was intentionally in my direction with holding up funds, which was obviously not the case. So, you know, I was thanked, and I was thanked profusely on social media and by individuals, and I appreciate that. But what I would ask is, and I really hope, that those responsible for starting and spreading false rumors, checking the facts, especially when it comes to commissioners. When you think they're doing something, ask them, because that affects their reputations and affects the governing body. And when it's not true, it really makes the city look bad. So really, please, be careful when you do that. Check on it first. None of it's true, hey, say whatever you want. And with that, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Kosabun.
Streets and Roads for October. Appliances have been collected, 98 tires, 312 electronic waste received, 363 street sweeping tickets written, 4,625 bags of loose leaves and grass clippings collected. Road repair on Circle Drive completed, road repair at Fifth and Broad completed, road repair at the end of 15th Street has been completed, road repair at Sixth and Garrison completed, road repair in front of the police building completed, road repair at Lloyd Terrace and Joanne Drive completed, emergency sinkhole repair at 131 Vine Street completed. Loof leaf collection has begun since November the 3rd. You can place them out until December the 31st. No brush, should be out to the curb for collection. Next brush collection will be May of 2026. Congratulations to the new city commission from the Streets and Roads Department, Wayne Gressman Supervisor. Streets recycle and clean communities. In October, they replaced 21 damaged carts, 12 missing or stolen carts. They deliver carts to four residential units that previously did not have them. Thirty-six notices of violation were issued in October, zero tickets issued in October. We have a second group that is in the process of signing up for the Adopt a Road program. Once this application is complete and approved, the signs for their road will be ordered and installed. We have purchased cigarette butt receptacles from Tarek Cycle. They will be installed at various city-owned locations to replace the existing receptacles that have, keep getting damaged or dumped. They are recycling the butts through the Tarek Cycles for free. The e-waste oil antifreeze and rechargeable battery drop off at 15th Street will be closed on Tuesday, the 11th for Veterans Day. Any individuals that would like to adopt a road neighborhood or drain, please contact Chris Finch with Recycling and Clean Communities, 825-7000, extension 7612. And just a reminder for the residents, please do not throw your rechargeable batteries in your trash or your recycle. They can start a fire, which they did. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosabun.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yeah, at the work session, we decided not to approve the water capital bond, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank a couple of departments, engineering, our CFO, our business administrator, and our water and sewer superintendent. You know, a lot of time this year, you know, plans have changed, and you know, we put a plan together and we couldn't see that through. Also, this evening, we decided not to do the revisements on the employee manual. Again, thank you to all those that put in the hard work to try to get this through and up to date. It's unfortunate not to see something through like that. I do want to thank our clerk's office and those that assisted with this past election. So thank you, Emily, and your team. And I was reading through our engineering report, and I thought this was kind of cool to share with everybody. Little kudos to one of our city employees. In the effort to meet DEP requirements, as well as to extensively map the city of Millville's utility and assets, our engineering aide Shelby Myers has been working to create a custom GIS, or geographic information system. For the city using the IRA GIS software, since she started, she has created a custom geo database for the city and has mapped all the city inlets, outfalls, and hydrants. She continues to collect data in the field and acquire data from current projects, and she also collaborates with other departments to create and upkeep the map for the city of Millville. While carrying out the required MS4 storm wa, stormwater mapping, she has also piloted a hydrant inspection application that will allow hydrant inspections to take place through the IRA's Field Maps, Field Maps app, which will update her main map in real time and increase the ease of use for the inspector. Thought that was something good to share. So thank you to our engineering department, Shelby, for doing so. And congratulations to all those that won this past election. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Zoning board is canceled for tomorrow. Planning board will take place on Monday at 6:30. Notices were issued for 242 code enforcement violations in the month of October. Failure notices were issued for 123 rental units with 146 rental units passing. Code enforcement coordinated with the Clean Communities Coordinator, known as Chris Finch, to have a camera placed in a new location to identify people engaging in illegal damping, in illegal dumping. Code enforcement worked with the police department in order to clear people from a home that has been a center of illicit activity, to have it completely boarded and secured. This past Saturday, I attended Veterans Day, the 24th Annual Veterans Day Ceremony held by Millville's Army Airfield Museum. Very windy, very cold. At our airport, it is always windy, and that is key for proper flying. I even, given the chance to speak, spoke briefly and shortly. Shouted out to Doug Smithson that, you know, it is perfect flying weather when there is a strong headway for wind. So, well attended by all, and even an up and coming birthday to Mr. Tim Kinnearney, which his birthday will be later this month, and he will be 104 years old. So he was one of the, I think, two or three World War II vets in attendance that day. So thank you to the Millville Army Airfield Museum. Next year is a big year for them, as it's the 80th anniversary of, yeah, the 80th anniversary of the Millville Airport being established, Army Airfield Museum, Army Airport being established. So exciting things for them in the future. I also would like to congratulate, you know, everybody that did stick their arm out and say, hey, I want to improve the city of Millville. It's not easy being up here, learning this job, learning how to operate and do our jobs up here every single day throughout 365 days in a year, and for doing it for four years. And I congratulate all of us that did that for four years. And I welcome those that did get elected, and you know, votes aren't final yet, so maybe somebody could potentially get in. But it is challenging, and it's a rewarding and learning experience. So I congratulate each and every one of you that did stick your arm out and say, hey, I wanted to try and do this. Congratulate those to those five that did get elected. You'll learn a lot, I guarantee you that. And not every day is going to be easy, but it's all for you and for all of us here in the city of Millville, a betterment for our community. So thank you. Ordinances in the second reading.
Ordinance for second reading, item number one, and ordinance to amend the salary ordinance.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion and second for ordinance in the second reading, item number one. I would now open it up for public hearing. Public comment on this ordinance. If anybody from the public would like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns. Seeing no one, I will close public comment on ordinance in the second reading. Any comments?
Yes. We decided to amend the salary ordinance to be competitive for a position that was, you know, posted for quite some time. I think it was maybe close to two years we had that position posted. We did make an offer to a potential candidate. Didn't work out in our favor, but I think this is still good to follow through with, you know, in case we do find another potential candidate, as we still have the same objectives for that finance department.
Excellent. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes.
Ordinance for second reading, item number two, and ordinance amending chapter 52, police regulations of the Millville Code to repeal Article VII electric motor scooters in its entirety, and replace it with new Article VII electric bicycles and scooters to establish regulations associated with the operation of both electric bicycles and scooters.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion and second for ordinance in the second reading, item number two. I would now open up public comment on this. If anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, please go to the podium. Seeing that, seeing none, I will close public comment, public hearing on it. Any comments? Commissioner Hewitt, explain this, brief detail what this is doing.
Yes, this is, as we all know, there's situations with now the scooters, stand-up scooters, electric bikes. Some of these things really get moving. It's going to require helmets to be worn on them. It's going to be requiring them to follow rules and regulations of the road. This is being proactive before we wind up with another law popping up saying hands off. This is not saying we're going to chase people on these, but let's just picture one tantalizing one of our officers or something, or whatever, and it's seen, and they're on the sidewalk. Well, well, that scooter, you know, that's what this is for. This is being proactive.
Commissioner, can I add something to that? The ordinance that exists does regulate motor scooters and electric motor scooters, and I think one of the purposes of this, and one of the reasons why it's necessary, is we all now have electric bikes. They're all over the place.
Yep, correct.
And the current ordinance really doesn't regulate them. So I think there's a movement across New Jersey to pass ordinances to regulate electric bikes, because if you ride an electric bike, you can go 25, 28 mile per hour, and then they need to be regulated.
And these, these, these electric bikes, not the scooters as much, there are some that'll go faster than that 25 mile an hour. At the 25 mile an hour break point, you see golf carts in neighborhoods and stuff, they have an LSV tag, low speed vehicle. They have to be, after the lights and everything else on them, they have to be tagged and registered, which means they have to be insured. Like I say, we're just getting ahead of the game. There are other municipalities around us that have done this. It was brought to my attention, and this is why we're doing this.
Mayor, so are we allowed, are the officers allowed to chase them, or no?
They're not, they're not, they can't chase them.
Okay, so, well, we are in New Jersey, God help us, we have something we're not regulating.
I'm not going to say they can't chase them. There's no law made for this, but you know what a chase will turn into. A chase will turn into a major liability lawsuit.
Just, I'm just curious.
I know, I understand, Commissioner. But, yeah.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Sure, yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes. I know this is a public meeting, but I know what we're thinking of. Ordinance in the first reading.
That is the one we removed from the agenda.
Thank you. I have that crossed off, too. Resolutions.
Resolution item number one, resolution authorizing an emergency repair due to a sinkhole at 131 East Vine Street.
Make motion.
Second motion.
Any motion and second on resolution item number one. Any comments?
Yes. Save the havoc, Dean, from engineering. I just want to thank engineering, sewer department, our tax collector office, Streets and Roads, our city solicitor, joint effort into, you know, getting this problem fixed and making sure the billing was correct.
Thank you all. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes.
Resolution item number two, resolution authorizing tax and utility adjustments.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have motion and second on resolution item number two. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes.
Resolution item number four, resolution authorizing special assessment of municipal liens for certain properties incurred by Millville relating to board insecure.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have motion and second on resolution item number four. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes.
Resolution item number five, resolution requesting approval for the insertion of a special item of revenue funded from the Atlantic City Electric Sustainable Communities Environmental Stewardship Grant Program.
Move the resolution.
Second.
We have motion and second on resolution item number five. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes.
Resolution item number six, resolution authorizing the city of Millville to join the Southern Coastal Regional Employee Benefits Fund.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion and second on resolution item number six. Any comments?
We have an emergency meeting last, yeah, Friday. We're on a state health benefit plan. This is accepting mayor health. You seen the differences in the cost?
Oh, what do you wear a costume? Yes. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes.
Resolution item number seven, resolution authorizing the city of Millville to enter an indemnity and trust agreement, Southern Coastal Regional Employee Benefits Fund.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have motion and second on resolution item number seven. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes.
Resolution item number eight, resolution appointing fund commissioner and alternate fund commissioner to the Southern Coastal Regional Employee Benefits Fund.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion and second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes.
Resolution item number nine, resolution accepting code blue program grant funding from the Cumberland Empowerment Zone Corporation.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion and second on resolution item number nine. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Rominick.
Yes. New business? Seeing none, I will now move to public comment portion. We have now read the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name, and address your concerns. Please limit your comments to approximately five minutes. Thank you. Mr. Soloff.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Soloff, founder of InformTheVoteNJ.com. First, I want to take a moment to sincerely acknowledge everyone who ran in the election. Campaigning is difficult work. It takes time, energy, encourage, put your name on a ballot, and commit to public service, and it also gets quite messy, if you haven't noticed. I also appreciate the participation of the candidates when possible with my project. Progress has been made, and as should always be the case with public service, I hope the new commission gets many needed things done. With those basic acknowledgements being made, and as someone who covered this year's election after being asked multiple times to help make sense of such a crowded and overwhelming race for the public, I have some serious and immediate concerns that I believe should be brought up and addressed in view of the public sooner rather than later. With one of the top issues in this election basically being, how will we ensure the next commission will actually get along? I am going to unpack some observations but phrased into questions that relate to that basic idea. It should also be acknowledged that I did not set out to cause extra drama for any candidate on any ballot throughout the county. However, sometimes the drama is plain as day, and to not include it in my journalistic processes would be disingenuous. Perhaps take the following observations as an adult, providing feedback and suggestions to help incoming leadership get off on the right foot. So, on to the actual questions. First, how will this incoming board handle behaviors that amount to censorship, both internally among commissioners and externally in interactions with the press or public? During the campaign and the prior commission's tenure, we observed patterns where legitimate questions were deflected, communication was restricted or blocked, and narratives were tightly controlled. If I or anyone from the public call City Hall two months from now, will someone effectively tell us to go kick rocks? Second, how will this board ensure personal safety, not just physical safety, but psychological and professional safety for anyone attempting to engage in civic dialogue or even basic professional communications? Multiple candidates expressed concerns to me privately about potential retaliation or intimidation, and I myself have experienced things one could reasonably argue as manipulation. Even the perception of that kind of environment should be enough to warrant a public conversation. Third, if there were never any genuine safety concerns brought up during campaign conversations, and perhaps they were simply campaign rumors, then what steps will the new leadership take to prevent rumor-driven politics from taking root again? Because rumors can destroy reputations, deter participation, and corrode public trust faster than many policy failures. Fourth, what will the incoming commission do to uphold basic professionalism and accessibility, such as answering emails, setting and following through with appointments, providing substantive answers to questions, or, dare I say, not intentionally misleading or lying to people? Too often during this campaign, those basic curaties went ignored, or at least effectively ignored. If some incoming commissioners could not consistently reach that basic standard during the campaign, why would we believe that behavior will suddenly change on inauguration day? I didn't set out to be a critic. I just wanted to collect campaign information for people to review. For better or worse, the project has shifted some of its focus to how campaigns and current officials behave, because unfortunately, that seems to be a recurring theme. So my hope tonight is that the new commission makes a public statement, perhaps after some committee-style meetings, where perhaps they come to agreements about basic cooperation to improve transparency, communication, and professionalism. To not only show the people of Millville that this new era of getting along doesn't come at the expense of accountability, but just as importantly, accountability shouldn't disappear the moment the campaign ends. There has been a common refrain among candidates, I can't wait until this election is over so we can get past the stress of campaign season. But the reality is, for those stepping into office, that luxury doesn't exist. The concerns that arose during this campaign, especially the ones I mentioned tonight, don't vanish on election day, and they won't be solved by smiling through the first two weeks of meetings. So in conclusion, I'll briefly put all this another way. I myself have strong reason to believe that very soon, my presence in this room won't be welcomed, just like other rooms in this county, despite many, despite many voters saying they appreciate my work. So ask yourself this, who else might not feel welcome in several weeks? The public, other press outlets, or perhaps some of the commissioners themselves? Thank you.
Well, so long as I'm up here.
Might as well.
Oh, yeah, might as well. Joe Sullivan, I'm here as, first off, I'm here as the program coordinator of the Millville Municipal Alliance Committee, and I would like to thank all of you for the support that you gave us over the last four years. And Commissioner Sui, I'd like to thank you for helping me get that first grant to take 16 kids up to the Peer Leadership Conference. And Commissioner Watson, I'd like to thank you for helping us this year. We're, we're starting on our volunteer recognition dinner, which will be December 7th, where we bring families with younger children. We have Santa Claus there, they get a picture with him, to get some toys that annoy their parents. And, yeah, we're, we're working with the school. We have, again, we have a program that we brought a grant to the Board of Education to bring speakers into the schools for drug and alcohol prevention. And again, I thank yous for that. Then, as for me, I don't know if any of you have driven down South Second Street, but if not, you should take a ride down there, because there are manholes covered that are this deep in the road, and they just took it. And I mean, it's not, I'm not talking an inch. I'm talking three, four inches at least down the road. I ride a motorcycle, and if I'd have come down there at night and not known they were there, it would have definitely thrown me off my motorcycle. And I know it's a state road, but it's in our city, and I don't know who it is up here that can get a hold of the state and tell them to get their heads out. But I think somebody should see that that road get fixed, because even a car hit it. We hit it with one of the, the work trucks, and this shook the truck. So I would appreciate it if, and I'm sure other people would appreciate it, if somebody reaches out to the state and asks them to please, do a job that a professional would do. I don't know who did the road, but if that's what a professional does, they're piss poor professionals. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
First of all, I'd just like to thank all 19 candidates that ran, including the three up there that's already had the stress of sitting in that seat and then enduring a long campaign. And anybody who's ran knows that it's grueling, right? It's tough, a lot of things were said, a lot of things good, a lot of things bad, right? And then you got to figure out how to end that day and somehow get together, right? I don't know how to respond to that 42-page dissertation, but I will try to answer some. I will be there for you. I'm not saying that I'm going to, you might like my response all the time. I'm hoping that the people that are in will respect anybody who comes up there with a difference of opinion, long as we clean it, keep it nice and respectful, right? But I mean, you put that question out to a lot of candidates who weren't there yet, so you're speaking to this board and they can't speak for anybody else too. But I would just like to tell you that if I'm still able to get in after, you know, the final vote, you're more than welcome to reach out, and that goes with anybody, right? You can't run up there, these five individuals spent four years, one year, like getting torn apart, right? We love to sit at the microphone and tell you guys how bad a job you're doing, right? And now some of us are going to, you guys are going to be able to have the opportunity to, you know, tell us that the bad job we're doing, right? Toss the microphone to you, right? I'm sure Kirk will be here. But I do want to thank you guys. I want to thank all five of you guys. A lot of you guys take a lot on the chin and keep showing up, and I do appreciate it. I know we don't always see eye to eye, but I just wanted to say that to the 19 people that ran. I met some people I didn't know before. I met some candidates I wouldn't have known six months ago and built some great relationships. So there are a lot of positives. But if you can shorten that little bit when we get in and make it easier for us to respond, but please hold us accountable. Don't stop holding people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner-elect. So we got to start doing that, Rick.
Not yet. Commissioner-elect, yeah, well, it's good.
Cindy Cook, Millville Valene. I would just like to extend my congratulations to all of those that even participated in the elections, whether you won or whether you lost. We had a phenomenal group of people that were up for election, and my sincerest hope is that those that did not win still stay engaged with our council and, you know, help support us here in Millville. It was a very, very hard decision, as some of those candidates were above and beyond excellent. So I just want to say congratulations to the winners and also to those that lost for participating.
Thank you, Cindy. Seeing no one else, I will close our public comment portion. Closing comments of Commissioners, Commissioner Hewitt. Go ahead.
I'll be the one to touch on it a little bit, Steve. You know, you hit a point where you said you don't know if you'll be allowed in these chambers. Really, nobody can keep you out, but I think you already felt the wrath of a committee, of a political committee, because I do read your stuff at times. But personally, me sitting here, and probably others that sit in positions like this, there are many times that we can't talk to you or somebody that's trying to do what you do and you're putting the effort into it, because there's a lot of things that we do that we can't talk about. And I, you and I have just talked personally at times, casually, but it puts an elected official into a position that they shouldn't be put into. Not saying it is wrong, it's just sometimes people can't talk. Myself, you don't see me at breakfasts and dinners. I didn't have to be invited to not come back. I just saw the writing on the wall, and I cut it. That's just my thought there. I appreciate what you do. Like Commissioner-elect Cott said, huh, just down a little bit. I think that's a general consensus. I would have said that to you personally, but you asked. With that, everybody have a great couple of weeks. We'll see you back in here, and hopefully some more of the incumbents will be here. And we are moving on to move on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Suie.
Yeah, I want to put out my respect to everybody that had the courage to run. It's not an easy thing to do. It is difficult. And on that note, a couple of things. I was cleared in the latest investigation, which I'm sure that some of you, whoever wins, will have to endure. So it's really not that bad. If you work for the Police Department and you've ever been investigated by IA, as I was in correction several times, and it's just a piece cake, just tell the truth, no problem. And all the nonsense eventually goes away. Second, you know, you touched on some stuff that was said during the election, so I double checked with the CFO today, so whoever wins, you know, I know the numbers aren't totally final, but relax, there is no deficit. That was nonsense, there's no deficit, I'll repeat that again. And believe it or not, the city sends its money to the Board of Education, and we don't have a pile laying around because we didn't send it there. And my final thing is, the cartoons will continue. And with that, progress.
Thank you. Mr. Kosabun.
Come on, Vice Mayor.
I just want to say, congratulations to all, everybody that, the 19 candidates who put themselves out. It is not easy. It is not easy. You put your heart and your soul into it, and there was a lot of good people, and I can't say enough. So just keep on coming back, because we do need you. You have a lot of the knowledge. Mr. Soloff, I can only tell you that you will get respect from me. I cannot speak on the behalf of the other ones that will be sitting up here, but everybody deserves to be respected and listened to. So, and with that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosabun. Vice Mayor Watson.
Again, just like everybody's saying, you know, congratulations to those who, you know, received the votes to be on this commission. Again, thank you to all that, you know, tried to run, do their best efforts to provide and serve the city, and it's all good stuff. I know when I was, you know, going through it, it wasn't easy. I received congratulations and condolences, so I don't know if I would say the same thing, but to those that, you know, are potentially going to be sitting in these chairs next year, you know, you're going to be tested, your characteristics, everything that you were taught, you're going to learn new things, you're going to hear a lot of different people, and you're going to be stuck in really tough situations, and you're going to have to pick between a bunch of bad choices. There's not a lot of good ones. So I really do hope that they're ready. I hope that they pay attention, I hope that they read, which I'm horrible at, you know, keeping up on anyway, there's a lot of stuff you're going to have to keep up on. But congratulations, I won't wish you any condolences, but.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. That's interesting. I hear, as being the youngest mayor ever and, you know, second youngest ever elected here in the city of Millville at 26, four years ago, which, look how, is, I always get meeting new people around just in public elsewhere in the communities, South Jersey, and they see the shirt or something, and I hear all the time, I don't envy you. I never, ever expected that, at being a young person at all one bit. And I'm sure a lot of people don't. It is not easy, just as you said. I didn't, I don't think I got condolences, that's wild, but it is, you know, you have decisions to make between a rock and a hard place, and there is no good, but it's no good outcome, it's just the opportunities that present itself are there, and that's awful. You reminded me of us in, you know, the past four years, some difficult, difficult times, but we prevail, you know, we work together as a board of commission that we are. We are, each and every one of us is a commissioner here. Some of us hold different titles, but we work together in respect to our own departments, and that is how this city operates, and I don't think it's the greatest former government. I think we have grown past that point. But I do congratulate, once again, to all that did run for Millville City election in 2025. Best of luck, reach out if you have any questions, I'm here to help. If the other Commissioners want to help, they'll tell you that, but you got a lot to learn in basically two months.